We're ready to go. We're going to open the August 19th Selectments Meeting. Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. We had an appointment at 7:00. Vote special event permit for the Solomon Pond Mall for outdoor music, food concert series on grass behind the Regal Cinemas. Is that you?
That is me.
Come on up.
Thank you.
Oh, no, we requested you sit there so that you can see the camera. Folks can see you on film.
Excellent.
All right. And can you introduce yourself?
Yes, my name is Matthew Dyer. I am the Director of Marketing for the Solomon Pond Mall.
Okay, great. And do you want to tell us a little about the event, or?
I'm not sure if any of you have seen the emails. It's basically a small-scale event just to drive traffic to the malls. We're doing it the four Saturdays in September from 3:00 to 5:00. We have the four vans already lined up and ready to go. We're expecting maybe 100 people. This is the first time we've ever done it, so we're not really sure how many to expect. But I think we're expecting 100 to less than 100, no more than that, I don't think. Again, first year, so we'll obviously have better numbers afterward.
Okay.
Yeah, basically just a small event geared to driving traffic into the mall.
Okay. No beer?
Nope.
Okay.
No alcohol, no food trucks. We have two of our local restaurants coming out to provide pizza and appetizers and things like that.
Okay. Questions? Anyone?
All public safety and public health reviews have been done, and they've okayed them, the application.
Is this similar to the one, was it this one this weekend? Yes?
There was supposed to be a Beer Garden one this weekend. The company that actually was supposed to host it had to back out. His wife ended up having complications in their pregnancy. And she's going to go into labor in the next week or so. So he didn't feel super comfortable hosting a Beer Garden when his wife did go into labor, so. Smart choice.
Okay. So that one's the answer.
Yeah, it's going to be postponed at some point. We just don't know when yet.
Okay.
Okay.
And then I assume you'd have to reapply?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Seconded. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
I'll spread the word. I'll put it out on Facebook.
Excellent. We appreciate that. Do I need to sign something, or everything good?
I think we have to sign, correct?
Yes, right at the bottom, all three of you.
Yep.
Matt, I can scan and send that to you.
Okay, perfect.
Awesome.
Thank you very much, ladies. Have a great rest of your evening.
You bet. Best of luck.
Thank you. And the next thing on the agenda is a vote to grant the St. Joseph's Church for the Fall Fair one-day beer and wine serving license. Send that back to Margaret.
Thank you.
And a special event permit, and from 9:00 to 4:00. Is there anyone here? Come on up.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Lee Reardon. I'm the Administrative Assistant for St. Joseph's The Good Provider, and this is our 66th year of holding the Fall Fair.
Wow.
So we're just looking for the one-day license for...
And the one-day license, you've done that for three or four years, maybe?
Yeah, I think this is the third year.
Okay. Yep.
I was fairly new.
All right. Are there any questions for Lee? Well, it's an awesome event.
The application was for the sale of beer and wine on premises. It's one day, Sunday, September 8th, correct?
Correct.
From 10:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m.?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I'll see you there.
Yes.
I need winning tickets at the Portuguese.
Oh, yes, you do.
Just saying.
Anything else?
No, that'll go on Facebook, too.
Peg gets winning tickets?
Yeah, Peg needs tickets.
Winning tickets.
And we've got the Economic Development Committee Chair is going to speak to us about supporting the Worcester County Economic Development Organization.
I have a little to say, except that we should be good municipal citizens and support this initiative. And with any luck, the board will agree.
Do you have anything?
Well, just a little summary. The Worcester County Chamber of Commerce was solicited and oversaw the creation of a Southern Worcester County Economic Development Strategy. And from that, CMRPC has now taken over to create an Economic Development District. And they are now putting in an application to create an Economic Development Organization in which we would have a representative in Mr. Hoffman as the Chair of Berlin's EDC. So the letter of support is for the Economic Development Organization, and the application's being submitted to create it.
Okay.
And this allows us to avail ourselves of federal funding for economic development and related initiatives.
Okay.
I'll seek the approval of the Board tomorrow night, so I'll sign it tonight and we'll hold it pending their approval.
All right.
If you approve it.
Yep.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, no, I had questions.
Oh. You can do questions after I make the motion.
Okay, yes.
Seconded.
All right, go ahead.
All right. And if you don't know the answer, that's fine, but just as I was reading, they kind of came up.
Do I get the merits if I don't know the answer?
You absolutely get the merits.
Oh, boy.
Half. Half the merits.
You're the best.
I know that. So it talked about funding for economic development. Do you have types of funding that we might be eligible for?
I get the impression it's state and federal, not us.
Okay.
It's my impression.
Okay.
That was what you just indicated, correct?
All right.
Yeah, and a lot of that could be infrastructure-related to support economic development, so there are a number of things that could be funded.
So there was talking about the infrastructure, regularly identify all available and/or underutilized sites or buildings within the region. So would this help to apply for like our space committee that we have now?
I would think not.
No?
I mean, I think it's infrastructure, as in buildings, structures, bridges, roads.
All right.
So, you know, Dave, some of you know that I spoke to Dave Smith about some ideas, and he came up with what I thought was a very good idea, which was to remove some of the dying trees before they become an infrastructure hassle or risk, safety risk, and fall in a car. But it didn't qualify for a different priority.
And then under enhancing the entrepreneurial spirit, targeted to assist startup businesses and budding entrepreneurs. Any specific market? How's it going to be marketed for people to know that it's out there for assistance?
The short answer is I don't know.
Okay.
And the long answer is, I don't know that we have, at least within this town, any budding entrepreneurs that want our assistance.
Well, I don't know.
But if there's one out there, please speak up.
Well, I don't know. I mean, if it's out there and we can publicize this, you never know who might come out of the woodwork. Okay.
My impression is this is a new initiative that they're still working out, will work the details on, and that stuff will come later.
I think subscribing to this is why they were promoting us participating will tap some other resources.
Yep. Okay. I'll wait and come back to you with more questions.
Can't wait.
I know. I can see it all over your face. Thank you. I'm done.
Okay, you seconded the motion, correct?
Correct.
All right. Is there anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Good job.
Jeez, thanks.
You're welcome.
All right.
So Peter, you'll take the original tonight to bring it to EDC tomorrow.
I'm going to sign it tonight. I'm going to sign it. I'll sign it.
Oh, okay.
Who has it?
Right here.
It's coming.
And then you just, and I'll get ahold of Mary on Wednesday to confirm, to release it.
Okay. All three signed. Awesome. Thank you, Peter.
You're welcome.
Coming back.
Thank you. Mm-hmm. And 7:15, we have our Highway Facility Superintendent Monthly Report. Come on up, Dave.
Good evening. Long time no see.
I know.
So it was brought to my attention, we never did a report for the month of June. So if you don't mind, you take one down and pass along, we'll briefly touch on the month of June. There was no old business, there was no impact to the budgets. New business was mowing fields and road sales. We moved some trees on Gates Pond that were dead and Old Central. We went into catch basin repairs on a few that had settled and eroded over the winter. We did another class with Bay State Roads. Co-op student transitioned to seasonal in June, and we added another seasonal employee, Carl Hyatt, who's been doing all the mowing in town all summer, and it's a tremendous help to the guys. We did Amy in June's new temporary office. We cleaned that up and painted it for him, as well as the Town Administrator's Office. And we did some work at the transfer station.
The work came out beautifully. Thank you.
You're welcome. So now we move on to July. I'm hoping you got this electronically, because I didn't make a whole bunch of copies.
I did, I did.
I'll need a copy.
Tree complaints, old business. We have a major problem with trees. I'm going to keep, you're going to hear that until something gets done, because I got two more today. It's a problem. I'm not sure what to do about it. I budgeted $10,000. I've already spent $1,500. That gets me another five days of renting a truck, right? It doesn't go very far. I think the smart thing to do is for the town to look into purchasing a truck. Because the tree, this is, I'm estimated there's probably 1,200 trees that are dead now that need to come down. That's not maintaining trimming, that's just removing the dead trees.
I saw them coming down Derby. It was like every other tree had a giant back on it.
It really is.
And is this the moths?
Gypsy moths and the drought from two years in a row. They just never recovered.
Yeah.
And they're still dying. I mean, if you look around, there's still trees now that have one or two limbs on them with leaves, and the rest aren't. So it's going to be an ongoing thing, as well as the Emerald Ash Bore, which is killing all the ash trees in town, or all over New England, actually. So over the next five years, that's going to be a problem. There will be no more ash trees.
Ask a question through the chair.
Sure.
Does National Grid take care of tree trimming over their lines?
I'm glad you brought that up.
Okay, good.
Because I met with National Grid.
Okay.
And their representative is going to set me up with their forester, and hopefully we can do the same arrangement with them that we're doing with the private company that we hire, that we supply the ground force, and they bring a truck with a man in the bucket. But they're only going to work around their lines, not going to do, you know, something on the other side of the road from that line. But if they do 20%, that's 20% we don't have to pay for. We'll see how that goes. You know, I was trying to buy a truck from another town, and that deal fell through, so we have to look elsewhere. The tree thing, the impact of the budgets, I put $250,000, and I think that's conservative.
Is there, have you ever looked into sharing, or?
So the town used to do that with Boylston.
Yeah.
The trucks are so expensive now, and...
Insurance?
Yeah, it's just not like it used to be. The only other option, there are, I think, three or four communities, I think Hobbitson's one of them, Rutland out that way, that they all went in and bought a truck together, and they share it week-to-week type of thing. But who do we go in with? You know, Marlboro has their own.
Bolton? Through the chair. I have asked CMRPC to put out feelers with other towns in this area to see if there's any opportunity at all with one or more other towns.
Right.
So, haven't heard back yet.
All right, that's the tree thing. More basin repairs, mowing. We did a few drain lines. We had the Sheriff Community Outreach Program in town for two days to pick up trash.
How often are they going to come? No, I think that's awesome that they do that.
I told them when they have a day that they have no plan to call me, so.
We can always use them.
Right.
Yeah. Great, that's awesome.
We had a little issue with the AC here. The AC upstairs froze on the roof, and the building got up to 85 degrees. And the drain line on the fire side plugged up and flooded the Fire Chief's office. But we fixed it. Signs.
I haven't seen any. I've been on the lookout.
Signs. So I talked to Chief Galvin about coming up with some kind of a program to have a sign, if somebody requests having a sign installed the proper way. There's no procedure right now, so that's something we're going to sit down and try to come up with. You know, do they go to the Board? Do they go to the TA? Do they come to me, whatever? There's got to be some kind of a process. So we're working on that.
Was that the research you were going to do on legal signs?
Yeah. The bylaws and the state laws are somewhat contradictory, so we need to address that.
Surprise, surprise.
Yeah. Let's see. As well as this, there's a lot of town roads that don't have stop signs that I think should have.
Mm-hmm.
I think we're exposing ourselves to some liability if, you know, we don't do something about that fairly soon.
Does it take someone complaining that they need a stop sign at a certain corner, or?
You could have an accident where somebody goes through.
Yeah.
Through the chair. Residents could have the ability to request street signs, whether it's speed limit, or children at play, or stop signs. I shared a policy in form with Dave and the chief that we're going to be reviewing to see if that's something that might make sense to be brought forward to the Board for approval.
Okay.
That would be requests of legitimate legal signs. It does not cover requests to put up temporary signs, for example. So that's something else we'd have to look at.
And there is no policy for the temporary signs at all?
I...
In the bylaws, there are.
By law, yeah.
Okay.
Enforcement is the issue, though, right?
Kind of.
That's hard, other than taking them down.
Even a temporary sign, you have to notify the person to put it up in writing, they have 30 days to remove it. So, right.
We don't know who is.
So what do you do about that?
Well, you can look at that policy, too, maybe. Okay.
Yeah, there are a lot of communities who are going through this. When I researched, there's probably something out there that's a little bit tighter than ours.
Questions? Sorry.
I guess I could ask Margaret and you, how is the Cole issue resolved?
So what is that?
Richard Drive?
I asked, I sent a long email to the Planning Board, to ask the Planning Board to look into it, and I have received some information back and haven't communicated that yet with Mr. Cole.
Okay.
So it's essentially everything that we had discussed earlier, I just need to outline it for him. I think one of his big concerns or requests is somehow getting that road approved ultimately. And because the conditions that were specified in that subdivision application were never met, he'd have to do some work on it. And that I need to really outline for him as to what would need to happen. So, yes, still on it.
It was sort of a long, ongoing process for us, so...
Yeah, but I have a lot in writing now.
If you could keep us informed?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, that's all I have. Two quick things. Thank you for putting up the signs. This week is, your mother called, don't let her. That's on the blinky sign, so it gets changed every week. And the other one, there was something on Facebook, I don't know if you saw it or not, people were asking about the painting of the sidewalks.
I did. We have painted the sidewalks and the stop lines already.
Okay.
I reached out two weeks ago to the company that does the line painting, and I'm waiting for them to come back with a estimate.
Awesome. Okay, perfect. That's all I got. Anything else?
Okay. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you again. Be safe out there.
Good evening.
Do we have to not know that we have minutes?
June.
Do we have minutes?
I don't know if we have the applicant here either.
No.
Okay.
Mary said I'll write to you.
I saw minutes. I saw minutes go by in email.
I usually look to see if they're in the folder, so are there any minutes in the folder that should be approved?
8:52.
Are they?
8:19.
Yeah.
Behind the appointment? Oh, the first page behind the tab.
So there's what, August 5th?
August 5th.
Okay. I believe I read them.
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Anything that he said? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Number two is the fire tanker.
Yes.
Were we passing over this?
Well, I'm actually going to make a recommendation along the lines of what I had recommended on Friday. We did receive addition, I did receive additional information today. The inter-local cooperative purchasing agreement with Houston-Gavelston Group is legitimate. I did research, found that it is in compliance with our procurement statute. So that is fine, and that is one of the contracts that I would ask the Board to sign. And I would make that recommendation tonight, to sign that. That doesn't bind the town to the purchase of the truck. The other contract is through Bulldog Apparatus, which is the company that contracts through the cooperative purchasing agreement and is allowed to contract directly with vendors, I'm sorry, with communities in Massachusetts. So I have scrubbed that. It's gone back to the Fire Department for further review and markups, and I would actually recommend that the Board approve the purchase agreement contingent on a few things. Number one, that a complete list of equipment to be purchased for the truck to make it fully equipped, and a listing of equipment to come off of Tanker 2 to equip the new truck be provided prior to us cutting a check to Bulldog for the equipment. And the cost of the apparatus under the contract would be $420,359. The full town meeting appropriation was $440,000. But that $420,000 amount is just the unit, it's the apparatus itself. We need to add the equipment. I've informed the Fire Department that the cost of the equipment to fully equip the truck can't exceed $19,641 in order to be in full compliance with the appropriation town meeting voted. So those listings, those lists of equipment, we are going to need before we issue our preliminary payment to Bulldog. The second thing we're going to need, and this doesn't have to happen tonight, we're going to need a declaration by the Board, a declaration of surplus equipment of Tanker Number 2, this is once we've received the new equipment, and Tender 1, which was equipment that was procured by a federal agency. So those will both have to be declared surplus, and the Board will have to direct me as the CPO to arrange for the direct sale of Tanker 2. The town meeting vote said trade-in, they will not trade it in because it's not equipment that is consistent with the equipment they sell, so they won't take the trade-in, but we can sell it directly, so you'd authorize me to do that. And you would authorize the decommissioning of Tender 1 and return to the Federal Agency of issuance. So those are the things that I would request if, with my recommendation, that the Board execute the contracts.
Okay.
Was Tender 1 the one that we just fixed?
It may have been.
Do you know?
I cannot answer that. Do you remember what was fixed?
I don't remember which piece of equipment. I know that either way, it had to be fixed.
Yeah, that's the one that wouldn't go up the hill?
Yeah, but they had to, because otherwise we had no truck.
Mm-hmm.
That was a few months ago.
And it's going to take quite a while to get the new apparatus, so we're going to have Tender 1 and the current tanker for a while, until we accept delivery of the new vehicle.
495 days.
Yeah, a long time.
Did you say 195?
495. 495. 49 days after we see.
So potentially, if the equipment lists are not appropriate, we could fix that.
We can fix it, but we have 10 days from the date of contract execution to submit the initial payment to Bulldog. We want to be sure we have those lists prior to the initial payment to Bulldog.
Absolutely. I would just, if we don't have it allocated enough for what that truck needs, we still have an opportunity to fix that before then.
You could, but I think we want to see the lists first.
And their standard equipment, and then add-on?
Your standard equipment.
Like must, like must equipment and want equipment? You know, like I must have this, boy, this would be nice.
You know, I can't answer that, not knowing exactly what a tanker is equipped with, not knowing everything that a tanker is equipped with.
It sounds like we have some of the equipment already.
It sounds like we do on Tanker 2, but it'd be good to see those lists.
Okay.
Okay. So you are asking us to approve of both of the contracts this evening with the caveats that you've stated?
That I've stated, yes.
Okay. So moved.
Okay.
Seconded.
Okay.
So just for written confirmation, and then declared Tanker 2 and Tender 1 surplus.
We're not doing that tonight, are we?
No, you don't have to do the surplus declarations until we receive the equipment.
Right.
And could the Board authorize, would the Board authorize the Chair to sign on behalf of the Board? We've got one signature line here on each of these tabs.
You want a motion?
Motion for you to sign.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So Margaret, that list, will that be compared to what other towns have, or?
Well, given the fact that the available appropriation is so limited, I would think that it would start with needs, I don't have a comparison with other towns. I know that the Chief is going to be working on this with the department, so. And I think, is it Lieutenant Lissy? Has been working on this very closely, so he's going to be working on the list, too.
Now, is this one you, or?[1630.12]
Well, given the fact that the, the available appropriation is so limited, I would think that it would start with needs, I don't, I don't have a comparison with other towns. I know that the chief is going to be working on this with the department, so. And I think, is it Lieutenant Lissy? Has been working on this very closely, so he's going to be working on the list.
Okay.
Now, is this one you, or?
That is you.
Okay.
That is you.
There we go. If we're all set on this one, we'll move on to our next appointment, seven thirty. This is Connect Wellness, Massachusetts.
Yes, hello.
You want to come on up?
Sure. I did bring a computer with a presentation, I don't know if there's a way to share that, or?
Do we have a projector in?
I can certainly send it along afterward and maybe turn the computer around for folks to see if, if helpful. We will.
Check. I don't know if it's in.
No, Mary?
Doesn't look like that, that's too new, I think.
I have a converter.
Wow, boy, he's setting up. Do you want to move on to the treasurer collector?
Sure.
Extension of appointment?
Yes, we need to extend the appointment of Dennis Fairbair, our interim treasurer collector, through to November thirtieth.
Once again, I prepared a recommendation on this too.
Okay.
All right, so I spoke with Dennis, he is amenable to an extension of his appointment through November thirtieth. We are looking to advertise this position, oh gosh, I want to say August thirtieth if I didn't put it down here, with a deadline for resumes of October first. We also recognize, and Dennis recognizes too, that we're going to be doing some fall tax billing during this whole period of time. So this extension will take care of that billing period and getting the bills out in November. My recommendation is just as the board previously appointed him, to maintain the FY nineteen salary for his position, to, and to maintain the weekly hours that have been agreed to previously.
Okay. So there were, Margaret, I have sent you the job description that I found on Indeed?
Yeah.
Yeah. Minor. Just minor changes, minor differences between what was out there. So I get, somehow I got a treasurer collector job description for the town of?
Oxford.
Thank you, she said, well, like, slipping through this, yes. And so I tried to go through it bit by bit to match them. As I said, they were minor differences in what was out there. They had talked about being bonded with a certi company that I couldn't find in ours, that talked about retirees and veterans benefits. Does Berlin issue parking tickets?
I don't think so.
No.
No?
Okay, because that was in there. And there were a few references where they specifically said, you know, in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter blah, blah, blah. So I don't know if you just want me to send you those, as I said, they're very minor with what we have versus what came across online.
That'll be totally fine with me. I know we do have a provision for bonding in our job description, but it's not cited exactly as you just read it.
Okay. All right, I'll send the changes to you.
Okay.
What I found. I'll copy the both of you.
Okay. So I recommend that the board approve the extension of appointment for Dennis.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, is there anything else? Hearing nothing, we'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Sorry, y'all.
Okay.
Hold on, let's close it there.
That's it, Mary, send them on the floor chair.
Rearrange them here.
No worries.
Can you lift it up a tiny bit?
Yeah, go closer. Or just put something under it.
Oh.
So sorry, everyone. There we go.
So do you think we can put this on our wish list that we'll have a room that has presentations available, like maybe a screen?
Better believe it, I'm working on that.
Yeah, good.
This is the most trouble we'll cause, I thought. Should we get started?
Yes, please.
All right, well, thank you very much for taking the time to be with us and allowing us to present this evening. Hopefully everyone can see the projector here. My name is Gabe Single, I'm the co-founder and CEO of Connect Wellness. We are a Massachusetts-based cannabis company currently seeking a host community agreement with the town of Berlin.
Can you adjust it downwards to the bottom, or is that what you're doing?
A little more down this way. Can I move it up?
With less ceiling and more at all?
Yeah. How's that? A little better?
Just call me the AV.
That looks good.
I know. Mary, were you an AV in high school? Just wondering.
All right, so not since prohibition is such a large industry become legalized literally overnight, the Massachusetts legal cannabis market is expected to exceed one billion dollars in sales in 2020 alone. And the Massachusetts cannabis program has been designed to have a positive impact on communities throughout the state. Many cities and towns have already jumped at this opportunity, including some of Berlin's closest neighbors and my hometown of Newton, Massachusetts. After months of due diligence, we have partnered with a Hudson-based real estate developer and have committed to pursuing a very exciting opportunity here in Berlin. Our company is led by experienced executives from multiple industries. We have extensive track records of success in both large corporations and new fast-growing businesses. We were very selective during this process and are excited to have the opportunity to potentially partner with the town of Berlin. We want to set the bar and work with the town to be a shining example of what a host community partnership in the Massachusetts cannabis industry can look like. Leading by example is so important to us because we are a local company and the way that we conduct ourselves reflects on us and our families who live in neighboring communities. Our team, along with our partner Kane Industrial, have established great professional reputations in the state and we intend to keep them that way. So a little bit about our team, and as you'll see, we have a few folks here with us today who will be happy to answer questions afterward. So I have a background in healthcare technology and I've served in management and director-level roles at large corporations and startups. I've been a member of the leadership team of two very early-stage companies, one of which has raised over a hundred million in venture funding and is widely considered as one of the fastest-growing health technology companies in the country. My co-founder, David Michaud, who unfortunately couldn't be here with us this evening, and I grew up together in Newton, Massachusetts. He is a licensed attorney currently based in Chicago. He has close to a decade of experience in private practice and as a corporate attorney. And while he looks well-rested in that picture, Dave actually just welcomed his fourth child last month, so I don't know if he's getting that much sleep anymore. And we're incredibly lucky to have these two gentlemen on our team. Archie's an experienced corporate CFO who has led finance departments for two large corporations. He has worked with multiple fast-growing companies and has overseen eight- and nine-figure mergers and acquisitions. And then we're going to talk a lot more about Steve, who's here with us this evening to my left, but he is considered one of the top cultivators in New England, if not the East Coast. So rounding things out, a few other folks that are here with us today, Clint and Justin. Clint is a security expert with extensive experience designing and implementing security systems and standard operating procedures for cannabis facilities. His company, Security Concepts, has offices in Duxbury, Massachusetts, and Cranston, Rhode Island. Justin is an experienced engineer and lead-certified expert in energy efficiency. Justin and I also grew up together in Newton, and he now lives in Natick with his wife and two children. Justin's wife, Rachel, was born and raised right next door in Hudson, and that's where her parents still live today. And finally, Bruce is an experienced attorney and civil servant. He spent years as one of the top prosecutors and consumer protection advocates in the state of Massachusetts. He has been in private practice for the past thirty years, where he currently serves as a partner at Boston-based law firm, Barron &amp; Single. He also happens to be my dad, so if you want to know what I'm going to look like in thirty-five years, it's probably, probably pretty close. So our cultivation program, so as promised, I wanted to get back to Steve, who plays a critical role within our company, and along with me and others on our leadership team will be responsible for overseeing day-to-day operations at this facility. Luckily for us, Steve has done this before as head of cultivation for the largest and most successful cannabis operators on the East Coast. Steve spent years developing and managing a world-class cultivation team at a facility, and he's very excited to have the opportunity to do it here, do it again here in Massachusetts. And these are not stock photos, these are actual pictures of the state-of-the-art facility that Steve helped design, build, and operate. Today, it is still the largest facility in Rhode Island, and during Steve's tenure with that company, he maintained a perfect track record of safety and compliance. I'm sorry if I missed this. Unlike some of the other cultivation facilities around the state, which have been built in abandoned warehouses and old mill buildings, the facility that we are proposing in Berlin will be a state-of-the-art and purpose-built facility from the ground up. We will utilize the latest energy-efficient and sustainable technologies, along with advanced security and seat-to-sale tracking systems. So here's your current, I'm sorry, it's not easy to see on the, on the wall here, but on the left that is a current blueprint, and on the right is a map of our location proposed for Bigelow Street in Berlin. After scouting dozens of potential sites, we found this one to be by far the best in terms of limiting potential impact on the host community. I'm going to pass things over to my partner, Kathy, to tell us a bit more about the site, our proposed plans, and our progress to date.
Hi, my name's Kathy Adams, I'm one of the three trustees of Kane Industrial Trust with my two brothers, who neither one could be here tonight, Jim Kane and Roger Kane. And we have owned this property since 2006, and it's just been vacant land. The building directly next to it is a hundred and fifty thousand square foot and Twistle Corporation, which was built in 1969, they've been a tenant of ours since, for fifty years. And they, you know, they're currently still a tenant and plan on staying a tenant for a while. And what we've done to date is, we have been to both, what's difficult about this site is it crosses from Hudson, which is in Middlesex County, into Berlin, which is in Worcester County, so we're dealing with two planning boards, two conservation commissions, and it just makes everything a little bit more complicated. What we've done to date is, Berlin is controlled by National Grid, and it took us about six months, but we've got National Grid to give up their rights of issuing power to Hudson Light and Power, which really is the only source. It's unfortunate that you can't see it from here, but the only butters on this property are the town of Berlin, the town of Hudson, four ninety-five, and our site, of which the Entwistle Company operates in, on Bigelow Road in Hudson. So the access would come through Hudson to land that's owned by, you know, in the town of Berlin owned by us. And we've gone to both conservation commissions, have delineated through ORAD, it's been issued in both towns. We've had preliminary discussions with both the Hudson Planning Board and the Berlin Planning Board. And before we went any further, we really wanted, you know, have the opportunity to speak to you, to make sure you were all on board, because there's a lot of engineering that still has to happen. I'd be happy to answer any questions as far as the engineering point of view, but it's, there's a wetland that runs through the middle of the property, and that would all be untouched by the development. And I think that's all we can really say right now. We have to, you know, still do a lot of work with both planning boards.
I'm happy to bring my computer over after to give you a better idea of the actual location.
Can you, can you email?
I'm sorry?
Can you email the slides?
Absolutely, yeah, I can email the whole presentation.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Perfect.
And that's really all I have to say, I'm happy to answer any development questions later if anyone has any.
And you're thinking strictly grow, not retail?
Yes, grow. Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Kathy. And just to round things out here, so in terms of community impact, this project brings with a significant revenue for the town of Berlin, so once completed, this property will pay about a hundred seventy, two hundred ten thousand in net new property taxes each year. As part of our host community agreement, our company will also pay an additional annual sum to be used at the town's discretion.
Excuse me, Gabe?
Yes.
Can you please restate the size of the facility, how many square feet?
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah, so the maximum zoning for what, based on your current zoning for that particular property would be ninety-five thousand, give or take, square feet on two levels. So be about forty-five thousand on two different levels.
It'd be two levels?
It'd be two levels, so you have an upper level and a lower level, so there'd be ground level access on the top side and ground level access on the bottom side, because there's a significant hill that's in there, so we would cut into the hill, and that's how it would work, would work. And that meets your current zoning.
So it's a little over ninety thousand square feet is what you're looking at?
Yes. And when I, I can email the blueprint that actually has the total square footage in the middle there.
Okay.
And the one seventy, two ten applies to the real estate tax or all tax? So, so real estate tax, so that is, I'm sorry, property tax specifically. So it's a bit speculative right now, we're calculating that based on rates of this year and what the current assessment of the land is, but that we think is a pretty conservative estimate for what the net new property tax for this property will be once the building is constructed. And then that is addition to the host community agreement revenue, which is, is part of the process of agreeing to a host community agreement, is determining an annual sum, whether it be a percentage of revenue from the company, or a flat fee each year, which would sometimes can be as much as six figures.
What do you estimate the range will be, low to high?
So, I mean, we've seen host community agreements that have?
Here.
In terms of what the?
Host community.
I'd say anywhere from fifty thousand a year up to three, four, five hundred thousand. Really depends on some of the terms of the host community agreement, and some of the projections for the facility itself. In addition to the revenue, we'll be creating fifty to seventy new full-time jobs in Berlin, and we'll prioritize hiring for local residents. These will not be minimum wage jobs, but well-paid positions with full benefits, starting at eighteen an hour for some of the lower-level positions, all the way up to a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year for some of our director and senior-level positions at the facility. The last two companies that I've worked for were named best places to work by the Boston Business Journal, and we plan to implement some of those same practices at Connect Wellness so we can hopefully receive that same honor one day. It's very important to us that this is a place that people take pride in working and are excited to work for. While we are excited to create jobs for the residents of Berlin, we understand that there are thousands of other jobs in the cannabis industry across the state. That is why we are going to offer free job training, seminars, and education to Berlin residents to learn a little bit more about this industry and different ways that they may be able to get involved. Aside from property tax and host community agreement revenue, we plan to donate to a number of Berlin-based nonprofits and community organizations. Many of the folks on my team are from Massachusetts, and we grew up playing youth sports in this state. We know those programs are some of the best ways to keep kids focused and out of trouble. We like to think it worked for us, and we're excited to support those organizations in Berlin. So in closing, I just want to thank you all for the time this evening, really appreciate you letting us come join your meeting. We're very excited about this opportunity, and hopefully you all feel like you know us and our company a bit more than when we first walked in. I'm happy to answer any questions, I have some other folks on my team, if there are specific questions about security, energy efficiency, or our actual cultivation program, I have those folks here with me today.
Are there any questions from the board?
Yeah, I went through my notes from the business that was here a couple weeks ago, so I just want to try and compare apples and apples. Can you talk to us about your security?
Absolutely. So I actually have our head of security, Clint Winn, here with us. So Clint's done a lot of facilities in Massachusetts and across the country. He's implemented best practices, state-of-the-art security systems. So at a high level, Clint, do you want to maybe talk through some of the details of the indoor plan and implement?
Sure. Well, the regulations are very specific as to what's required in terms of coverage of video surveillance systems, access control systems being key cards, and also intrusion detection. And that's both within the facility and on the perimeter of the facility. So it will be designed, presented, typically what happens is I design the system, present it to the chief of police. And once the chief has taken a look at it, because I don't know the ins and outs of every, you know, community and the pulse of the chief, some want Sally ports and connections and things outside, others want certain other things. So the way we usually do it is get it blessed by the chief of police, and then anybody who wants to see that security plan beyond that, we go through the chief to take a look at that plan. And this is something that we publish once we get it designed, for obvious reasons.
Parking?
Well, that would all be addressed with the site plan.
Okay.
And so we're putting the cart a little bit before the horse here. We don't have the site plan done, we have conceptual plans done that are a little more than conceptual. We've done soil testing, you know, we've, we've done a lot of work to know that this site is a viable site for this size building.
Okay. Well, no, the reason that I asked, I know that there were many concerns by the Berlin residents for Tempsacol, where there were backups on sixty-two. Thank you.
But this would be a whole, this would only be available to the people that work there.
Okay.
So it's really an industrial-based type thing.
So you're not going to have any retail businesses?
No.
There any other types of complementary businesses?
Well, there's other licenses that are available that are non-retail within the cannabis industry, and that would be something that Gabe would deal with.
Yeah, so it would be cultivation and product manufacturing. Yeah, so it would be cultivation and product manufacturing. So a part of this facility would be extraction and probably a commercial kitchen to bake things and cook things, but no retail. Right now, as site plan is written, we have about 100 parking spaces, which not only meets the zoning requirements of Berlin, but well more than we would need for the staff that would be onsite there every day, between 50 and 70 people. So more than enough parking, and like Kathy said, this is not going to be a retail location, so we don't imagine there will be any issues with traffic or backup.
The other business came in, talked to us about the use of sun and LED lights, because obviously, impact to the community.
Absolutely.
What are your plans around that?
Absolutely. So we are using actually the most advanced LED lighting system there is in the cannabis industry. I can follow up with some additional information, not to get too technical here tonight, but we're actually using something called digital electricity. There's a new company out of Rhode Island where this is not your standard powered LED lights. It's actually going to be generated through what are called energy packets from almost internet-like modules that go into racks. So this, the website tells a lot better than I do, but this is the most energy-efficient and advanced manner of not only lighting, but also power in the industry today, and I'm happy to follow up with that information for you all.
Impact to air and water testing, how often will that be done?
Yeah.
And again, I know some of these questions you may not be able to answer, but I just want to bring up the same questions that I brought up a couple of weeks ago.
Right, so we're still working with the town of Hudson. Hopefully, they'll be able to supply us with the water for the property. And most likely, whether it's town water or well water, it will need to be treated to have the exact specifications for the plants.
I'm done with my inquisition.
Okay.
If you have more questions, we'll make sure you have our contact info so you can follow. And we'll send you the deck, so you have that as well.
Appreciate that, thank you.
What else I'd like to say, too, is, you know, this is a prime location site because of the proximity, that it's basically in the woods by 495, an industrial building, where it's not...and we've had other national companies come to us, but we're a local family, we're a hometown family. We only really wanted to deal with a local company, and when we hooked up with Gabe on this site, it seemed like the right fit for us as a family.
And that was going to be another question. I mean, if this, for some reason, doesn't go through, similar to the sanding gravel pit, which was defeated by the town of Berlin. Are there any other plans where you would need to come in through Berlin to get to Hudson for any other businesses?
Well, this site has only, its only access is from Hudson into Berlin.
Okay.
It's surrounded by Gates Pond and town of Hudson conservation land. So like I said, the only abutters are town of Hudson, town of Berlin, Kane Industrial Trust, and 495.
Okay. Now I'm done.
Margaret, did you have anything?
I do have a question. A question came up at the last presentation the board had regarding odor, and how do you, how will you, will that be mitigated?
Yeah, so every facility of ours has a very advanced odor mitigation process and system in place. I actually have Justin, who's our VP of Engineering. Can we, at a high level, just talk through the odor mitigation system?
Yes, we would, a couple of different things. Any, I mean, any air leaving the building, any exhaust air leaving the building would be, would go through a pretty high-tech filtration system, where there'd be have multi-stage filters of carbon filters, post-carbon dusting filters, MIR 13 filters. So it's kind of a whole system of filtration that, so any air leaving the building would be filtered to mitigate any odors leaving the building. And then we would also, you know, make sure the areas inside the building that do have odors would be pressurized appropriately so that you don't have any odors leaving the building.
And we could send those plans as well to anyone that's interested. Yes?
Sounds like all agricultural activity is indoor?
Yes, yes. Great question. This is a 100% indoor facility, so all access into the property would be secured. There would be sort of a gallery when you walk in that you would not be able to get past the entry room unless you were an employee and you have key card access. But yes, 100% indoor cultivation, product manufacturing.
Were there any other questions?
Yes. If you can smell it, it's in the air. And I understand there is some effect you can get from inhaling it.
Yeah, so...
So, and we live in a low area, where sometimes in the morning you can smell the traffic oil.
Yeah.
Well, the same thing would happen with this, because we're below the hill for the apple orchard.
Yeah.
And so that could very well settle and affect our air.
Absolutely. No, it's a good question. So a couple of things. I think the reason why we take so many steps and frankly spend so much money and resources on odor mitigation is unlike the highway traffic that isn't filtered and doesn't have any odor mitigation system attached to it, everything that goes in and out of our facility through exhaust fans, through air conditioning, is going to be filtered in multiple layers to eliminate or greatly limit the amount of scent or odor that leaves the facility. And the actual smell, if any, that leaves the facility could not impact anyone or make them feel strange or have an effect on their life.
How much science has gone into this so far?
Has gone into...
This research on the air quality.
So in terms of the actual odor mitigation, in terms of how the scent can actually affect people that are inhaling it?
Both.
Yeah, so I wouldn't want to speak from a scientific perspective on potential effects of the actual odor. I can tell you that the systems that we would be implementing to mitigate that odor are the most advanced that there are in the industry, and the types of odor mitigation systems that have been implemented at a lot of the facilities in Massachusetts and elsewhere.
I'm also concerned about our water, because we have a double well, and how that would be effective, because I know it takes a lot of water to raise these plants.
Yep. Yeah, so I can talk a little bit about our odor, I'm sorry, our water reclamation. Do you want to talk a little bit about how we reuse water and how the water kind of flows through the facility and not actually out of the facility?
Sure. So we would use a precision, it's a precision irrigation technology, so everything, every plant is going to get exactly what it needs and not a drop more. So there's really barely any runoff that would go down the drain.
No, but we're taking water from the system, from our well.
Oh, where is it?
From our well, so our...
But they were using Hudson water.
Yeah, they're looking, they're doing an agreement with Hudson.
And how is that going to affect Gates Pond? Isn't that a water source, Gates Pond?
So I'd actually...
Yeah, I don't have any scientific knowledge of that at this point. We're hoping to use town water in Hudson. We don't have that answer yet.
It sounds like it's going to be very close to a water source to me.
It's actually pretty far. I mean, there's a lot of woods in there.
You'll probably have that information at the community outreach.
Yeah.
Right, so that's something, you'll have the details on that?
Absolutely. But I think we are pretty far from water source, and as I said, we are going to be using Hudson's public water, but we can certainly make sure we have that information in the community outreach meeting.
And where does this marijuana go if you don't, if it doesn't stay here? Where does it go?
Yeah, so our goal actually is for it not to stay here. Once cultivated and grown and processed, this is sold to the retail locations that are throughout the state. So there are hundreds of...
So is this Philip Morris and cigarette companies?
Are we Philip Morris and cigarettes?
No. Is that sold to them?
No, so this is strictly sold to the licensed dispensaries that are, that have been approved by the state and are located in about 103 cities and towns right now in Massachusetts. So we sell our product to the dispensaries, which then sell to patients and sell to consumers in the adult-use market.
And so kids can get a hold of this eventually?
Well, so there's a lot of strict security and a lot of strict regulations in terms of who can actually enter these facilities and purchase. So I can't speak for the industry in general, but I can tell you in Massachusetts, the level of security and regulation around these facilities is incredibly high. It's really set the bar for the rest of the country. So I would say for a child or kid who's under the age of 21, to get into one of these facilities or walk into one of these facilities and purchase would be nearly impossible today.
So I have a question.
Should we, should we limit this to another minute or two?
No, I'm coming from...
Because we have other things to do.
Yeah.
You could go in, you could go in the...
You would be doing a community outreach also, right?
Absolutely, yeah.
Where a lot of these questions could be addressed.
I actually, could I ask a couple of questions of that I think are pertinent? So my concern are a couple of things. I do keep hearing, and I do appreciate that it's a local family, you know, local, very local, and I've heard that a lot, but we do know that there have been cases, like in Plymouth with four daughters, where you've had a local, initially you negotiated a community host agreement with a local company, but actually in Plymouth, while they were negotiating that host agreement, it was sold.
Yeah.
Right? So I guess we just want to, we're a little weary of that, and want to, perhaps that is something that I'm sure you would be open to putting something, some kind of protection within our host community agreement for that.
Absolutely.
And the other concern really is, you know, there is another cultivator looking to, just on the same road, right, we'll have a cultivator and dispensary. So, you know, I of course have a question, is how does this fit into our town master plan? But really, an even, you know, greater concern is this notion of oversupply, because it's happening across the state. And since you can only sell within the state, to dispensaries within the state, I'm sure you would agree that there is a concern of oversupply and what happens then, and like what we saw in Oregon where the market crashed. I'm sure we've learned a lot, but again, we want to be careful and cautious about entering into multiple, you know, host agreements with multiple companies.
Absolutely.
So, yeah. And the other, the other big concern really is, and I'm sure you've seen the studies from Lancet and Johns Hopkins, and the statement concern out of Boston, linked to psychosis and schizophrenia, severe depression and anxiety. We're also seeing increased youth use in areas, California actually just came out with this, they did a study over the last few years, where wherever there are marijuana establishments, they do see an increased youth use. So our concern really is, what kind of things, and perhaps when you come to speak to the town, what kind of things could you do really to discourage youth use? What kind of education would you be willing to really fund within the town itself?
Absolutely, yeah.
Because this is a huge concern to us. And while I hear that it's going to be organic, we also know that there's been fines levied across the state by the CCC for violations to these. And as a town, once you've impacted us, can these fines, would you also be open, and do you think that it's a legitimate concern if a town were to also find you? If there was something that you did that directly impacted the town, so much so that the CCC find you? Maybe you could speak later to that as well? Would you be open to this?
When is your, when is your community outreach? Are you planning a date?
Yeah, so that'll be scheduled in the next couple of weeks. We wanted to have this meeting first, and then we're going to kind of go through that standard process.
Okay.
So, yeah, we'll definitely be prepared to answer all these questions and other questions. Would you like me to address one of those, or should we hold on?
I think, yeah. If we, yeah, the community outreach meeting has to happen, and it's good that attendees have alerted Gabe and his colleagues to the questions that will come up at the community outreach meeting. We have been working, and I know over the past few weeks since we had the last presentation here, I've been compiling a lot of host community agreements, a lot of host community agreements. So, you know, we've become much more well-informed, we're aware of some of the issues that were brought up tonight, so we'll be working on that in the meantime.
Yeah.
And I'm coming from a family that's been directly implemented, two useless cousins, where marijuana was an entry drug. They're in and out of establishments all the time, getting clean.
Yeah. I'm terribly sorry to hear that. We're not here to convince folks to vote one way or the other in terms of the legalization. This has been legalized in Massachusetts, and, you know, Berlin has, you know, agreed to hear it, so, yeah. So, but I'm terribly sorry to hear that, and, you know, we'd be happy to have further discussion at the community outreach meeting and address your questions and concerns.
Okay. I thank you so much for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Absolutely, thank you all. Really appreciate it.
We're, yeah, we're going to move on to the preliminary screening committees for the treasurer collector, the building commissioner, and the fire EMS chief. Do you want to leave until they move? Just so there's some chatter. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Oh, on the next item?
Yep.
So I'd like to know, we're going to be starting these, these screening committees up very soon. The deadline for the building commissioner resumes is August 30th, so it's coming, it's coming up. So I'd like to know what the board would like as far as screening, the search process. Would you like to just assign me to create screening committees to do each of these, the preliminary screening on each of these positions? Would the board like some involvement? Would you like some of the process to be public? I just need to know what you, what you're thinking, because if you assigned me to do it, the meetings of the screening committees would not be subject to the open meeting law, so they wouldn't have to call to order an open session and go into executive session in order to do candidate screenings. So I'm just looking for some direction from the board as far as this...
What did you have in mind? What, I mean, were you looking, were you doing local? Were you doing outside of Berlin?
I would like to, I wouldn't mind doing a mix for each of them, to have a mix of representatives on the search committees. I do like having some expertise on the committees. I think that's very important, so there can be some evaluation of the candidate's skills and qualifications. But I don't mind having a mix of residents or local officials and, and expertise from outside the area, or outside the town.
Okay. And what is the preference of the board?
I thought we had people in place for the treasurer collector.
There are, and I'm, I'm fine with that. If you want to keep it to those, to the three that you had named before, I'm fine with that. If you'd like me to look to add a finance director or another treasurer collector or something, I'm happy to do that, too, so.
How big do you want the groups? I mean, obviously an odd number, so three or five?
I would say five. I would say no more than five.
For each one?
For each one.
Okay. I agree. I mean, if you wanted to add another two people to the treasurer collector search, if, Lisa, you agree?
No, I think that's valuable to have more expertise and some outside also.
Okay. So we can have a mix. We've gotten a few, we've gotten interest expressed for a couple of, actually it's only one, just the treasurer collector so far locally, so we may be able to do something with the, with that. Nothing yet on building commissioner, but I can reach out more broadly on that.
Is this advertised at all for local people?
It ha, no, it hasn't been. I don't think any, I don't, to my knowledge, treasurer collector wasn't, and neither have the others.
Okay.
So it's just letters have come in.
This is sort of a side note, but would you mind putting together like a timeline for each of these searches?
Absolutely.
And sending it to us?
Absolutely.
Because I, you know, the dates are...
I actually included it in my town administrator report tonight, the timeline for each of them, but I can send it to you separately, too.
All right. That'd be great. So is that all right with the board to have a mix on all three?
Yeah, I like the mix.
Yeah, I do, too. And I think there may be people out there that are really, you know, dying to be on these committees.
Okay. What about questions? Leave it up to them to come up with questions? Will you come up with questions?
I would, I would be coming up with questions. I would accept, I would accept recommendations or suggestions from the board. I would accept, I would accept recommendations or suggestions from the board if you want to email me individually. I have a good sense, at least with, having done these searches before, I have a good sense of the questions that need to be asked, but I would certainly welcome questions from you and from the panelists themselves, the screening team itself.
So would you like a vote to authorize you to?
I would appreciate that and just keep in mind that with the fire EMS chief, MRI is gonna be involved in that one pretty heavily, at least early on with the advertisement and the preliminary screening.
Okay. And can you keep us up to date on all of these things?
Absolutely.
Too, as they move along?
Yes.
Okay. Um, do I hear a?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There'll be a lot of moving parts all at once.
Yeah, I'll say. So we have job descriptions, the fire EMS chief, wanna do that one first?
So, the fire EMS chief, since the board last saw it, there have been significant modifications as far as format. The job description itself was laid out very differently than other positions in town. Now it's more consistent with the other positions in town and I wanna thank Mary for weighing in and contributing to the qualifications and skills, job environment, knowledgeability, and style and physical requirements. Those came from other fire chief job descriptions and they do line up with our job descriptions format-wise. So what used to be basic summary, I can't remember exactly what it was called in the previous job description, I do have the markup right here, it was called general summary or basic functions. We've switched that out to, it used to be called basic function and it was a summary, we've changed that to general summary. And then under principal responsibilities, we've now changed that to essential functions consistent with other job descriptions in town. And then we've added all those other required sections on what it takes, what's required of the chief as far as skills, education, experience, physical ability, et cetera. So I wanted to present this to the board. The goal on this, if the board is ready to, to support my recommendation that, that this, these revisions be accepted, the goal is to get this advertised by August 30th.
Okay.
Couple of questions for you, Margaret.
Sure.
There obviously is an initial physical exam. Is Berlin going to move towards annual exams of either the fire chief and/or people in the fire department?
That is possible.
Is that something that is standard in other communities?
It is standard in other communities to periodically go through and a lot of times, frankly, it's written into collective bargaining agreements. So there are some requirements out there in other communities. I don't know that we can actually lean on any kind of statute for that, that's a policy that we would have to, that we would have to establish.
Okay.
So we're not probably ready to do that now, but should probably move in that direction?
Um, yeah, I think it's worth looking into that, yeah, absolutely.
And what about driving records? Same thing?
Driving records, yes, and we did incorporate into, Mary, help me out here, we incorporated into one of the job descriptions, periodic inspection of the driving record. So it would be done on an ongoing basis. I don't know if it was on this one or if it was on another one, but we can certainly incorporate it into this.
Again, just to reduce any type of liability that, oops, somebody lost their license, no one know about it, and they're driving a truck through town.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, because you had under qualifications and skills, lower up from the bottom must presents, possess an active motor vehicles license without record of suspension, but it doesn't say.
And we could say subject to periodic inspection for, you know, for active status or something to that effect. We, I think we added the language in the building commissioners, if I'm not mistaken, so we could add that same.
I know sometimes too, it's sort of part of the agreement that if there is an infraction, that you report that infraction to your employer.
Yes, and that's part of our personnel policy actually, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah. I was looking up something else, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think that's actually part of our personnel policy.
So that's already covered.
Mm-hmm.
And then the driving record could actually be more of policy for the entire fire department and not, you know, specific.
Personally, I think it should, whoever drives should have that, whether it's highway.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, across town, okay.
Right. Please.
Any other questions?
Chris, can I jump in with a question?
Do you have a question?
I do. Is the job description included, does it include being an EMT?
It does, yes, it does.
Does it say miles or minutes?
It says minutes, it's 30 minutes and the board discussed that at its last meeting, it's 30 minutes, within a 30-minute normal commute from the border of Berlin.
Thanks.
One final question. With all the other job descriptions, it was like, you know, if you're a firefighter here and then the next level you have to do yours, then down below, and then up and down below, and up, down below, do we need to include anything in this? So if you have like your hierarchy, so you have your chief, you have your deputy, so obviously, yeah, so fire, so the chief needs to be, to know how to do the responsibility of a deputy, next one down, captain, lieutenant, just so that it goes all the way down to say.
So they're multi. Yeah, I mean. That's the board's prerogative. I think familiarity with all, with all staffed fire department positions would probably be, you know, valuable.
Specifically vague enough to put it in there?
I think, yeah, I think that you could put something, it must show evidence, evidence of familiarity with all, with all positions in the command structure of the department.
Or could that be a goal of some kind?
Well, yeah, I think there should be some general familiarity. Given that the person is required, coming in, required to have held an officer's position for a certain number of years.
So you would assume that they're going up.
Well, I don't think that you can qualify for these essential functions without having that.
Experience?
Experience and knowledge. I, I think it's, I, I don't think you need to specify it because if you can't do, you can't do these things that are essential functions without having those skills.
Well, you could simply, to, to, to just incorporate that though, and the second bullet under qualifications and skills, where it says must have a minimum 10 years of fire service experience, with familiarity of all positions in the command hierarchy in the department or something like that, you could just add something simple.
Yeah, it doesn't matter, I still think it's redundant, but.
Sometimes redundancy's okay.
It's probably other things that are redundant too.
Same thing on the quarry? I mean, you gotta pass it to get in, is there going to be other quarry checks?
Yeah, subject to, subject to future quarry checks.
Okay. Is there another one, quarry?
Yeah, subject to annual.
Yeah.
There is sorry.
What does sorry stand for?
We have not, we have not, yeah, we have not done sorry.
And it stands for?
Sex offender.
Okay, I assumed, but.
Yeah. Quarry should, quarry should divulge some certain things.
All right, could you please remind me what SOP stands for?
Standard Operating Procedure.
Okay. Let's bracket my brain this afternoon.
By, by when does the chief have to move to that 30-minute mark if he or she is not within?
Time of hire.
This calls for, at time of hire.
Anything else? All right, is it the pleasure of the board to approve the job description with these changes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. All right, and we've got the animal control officer.
The chief isn't here tonight to present this, but this is the draft that he worked up since the board met last. He has met individually with the ACO regarding the increased duties or clarification of duties for the position, has given her a copy of the draft, understanding that it's a draft, that it's a draft until the board and the personnel committee approve, and has also gone over some policies that he has revised that she's going to, that the position will need to comply with.
Okay. And you're looking for approval?
Of the.
Of the job description for tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
So just a question going backwards, when this was first brought to us, it was presented as a special police officer?
Mm-hmm.
And so is that, like null and void, is that?
I think, well, I think that the board, if it votes to accept this position description, I do think that the special officer designation should be rescinded and that the appointment should strictly be made for animal control officer. And the reason I suggest that is because in statute, there are duties of special police officers and this position wouldn't necessarily have to meet them or be expected to meet those duties.
So does that mean a new offer letter? Because I can't remember what the offer letter said.
No, I would just, I would just keep.
No, I don't think it said anything about that.
I would keep the other terms that the board voted as-is and you could certainly memorialize it in writing, but I would keep the other terms as-is, just changing the title of the position or, or clarifying the title of the position.
Okay, any other questions?
Do you have any questions from personnel?
They already saw it, have they not?
They're gonna be seeing this, taking this up on Wednesday night.
Okay. So do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the COA van driver?
It was my understanding until today that the council on aging had act, had, had in fact, accepted the council on aging van driver job description, but I, I received some contradictory info today and so I'm gonna ask that the board pause on this and the van driver policies for tonight, and at least until September 3rd, until we get clarification on that.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so we're going to move on to the draft, Board of Selectmen meeting agenda, the format.
So in your packets, you have a sample, a draft agenda that would show a different formatting. It's, it's pretty standard, an order of things that would be everything from call to order, then your hearings and appointments and presentations, then announcements, approval of minutes and so forth and so on. This is just presented to the board to see if you are interested in a, an agenda format change or if you're, if you're fine with the agenda as it's currently formatted.
I just had a couple of questions. The department updates, they may likely, or should, should they have an appointment time?
They could be given an appointment time.
Yeah.
They could also be moved up to right after hearings, appointments and presentations to be sure they're at this, they're closer to the start of the agenda?
Okay, well, either way, I mean, we try to sort of have them give their reports and then be able to go home.
Yeah. That's very kind and I think that makes sense to move it up.
Yeah, and the subject, the name of the subject, old business, is that a good name for that?
It's pretty standard.
It is standard. It could be called something like ongoing business or business previously introduced to the board or, it could be a number of different things.
I would prefer to stick with the terminology that's used by everybody.
Old business?
Yeah.
Well, or, I mean, it was previously what, approvals?
It was all bundled under until like new, old.
Right, yeah.
Well, you could call pending.
Cause I don't know, some of them, would it be really old though? I mean, unless we've talked about it before, correct?
Well, we're gonna be, yeah, so we're gonna be presenting on an ongoing basis, we're gonna be presenting draft policies for approval by the board. We're gonna be presenting them at one meeting, but not having the board's approval till the following meeting to give you a good chance to review everything. So something like that, at your second meeting, at the meeting at which you approve, that's where some of those items would probably be listed.
Okay. The only other thing I thought about was the other business. How about questions, comments from the board?
Instead of other business?
Well, tell me what other business would be?
That would be, yeah, questions, board comments, board questions.
Questions and comments from the board.
Yes, we could focus on, cause we've brought the announcements way to the top, so you could just have other, you know, board comments or?
Updates?
Yeah.
Board updates, board comments. That's fine, I'm not used to seeing other business at the bottom of an agenda, that's not typically how I've seen it.
It's not specific enough.
So whatever it is you wanna call to kinda close out.
Yeah.
Your business.
Well, we just had new business, old business at the end or something and.
What Peg comes up with?
Yeah, and that's where, and that's where.
That's where I put the announcement.
That's right, okay.
That's where Peg would ask her questions.
So do you wanna just do board, wanna just call it board comments or?
Yeah, yeah. Questions, comments from the board?
You know what, put it in there, try it, if it doesn't like it?
Or just questions and comments?
Always change it.
Period.
Yeah, you can always change it.
Okay.
All right.
And then I just, one thing, I, I love how spaced it is and it's easier to read.
Yeah.
I would request if you're gonna go through changes, can we change this to a font that's easier to read?
Um, I have no problem with font, what's, what's the best one?
Um, I'm, I'm not sure.
What's the best font?
This one sort of dissolves on the screen.
We all have our favorites.
It's hard to read.
How about, what, the italics?
No, it's just in, in general, it's really, it doesn't show up well.
The draft that you're talking about still isn't big enough, I mean, or?
Maybe like.
I think it's the font, I think we need a readable font, this is not a very good font to read.
Maybe like Arial, that's usually pretty.
My standard is always Arial because it's, it's just something very.
Okay.
It, it's hard to read.
All right.
It's been driving me nuts forever, so, as long as we're making changes, let's fix this one.
We can change the font.
Thank you.
And we'll play with it, I'll do some reading tests on it.
Yeah, there are actually, if you look, there are the easiest fonts to read.
Okay.
There, there's a search.
All right.
Things that bother Lisa, yes.
So the suggestions I have are to move department updates up and add an appointment time, as is done now with the appointment, the department updates, change the font, change the name other business near the end to board comments or something similar.
Yeah, questions, comments. Even, even if it's, I guess it would be just in general, mostly us.
Okay.
Correct? Because is there a time, there isn't a.
There's another public comment section.
Yes, general public comment is in the middle.
Okay, so you would do comments, questions of the board?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or updates from the board, whatever.
Okay. All right. Give that a try.
All right. And then you had sent out agenda procedures, policy?
So, I, I, I think that Mary and I should go, walk through those to see what kind of impacts they're going to have on time, workload and time, just to see, kinda run some scenarios with, with those because they're, they're, they can be pretty involved.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll walk through those and do a few.
Okay, if you want me to help you out, let me know?
Yes, definitely.
And then we're, all right, where are we, Peg?
Priorities and objectives list?
Yes, okay. Priorities and objectives list.
Yeah. So, I did a request based on the three-page list that you saw at the last meeting, I whittled down the highest priorities, time, time sensitive high priorities to memo, a request to the board, that the board adopt these as high priority, high priority priorities and objectives. Some of them are already in the works, some of them are about. Some of them are already in the works, some of them are about to be, some of them are even going to be ongoing after six months, like the library septic system. So, but they are things that need to be done now.
Yeah, I mean, some of these would be things that you'd be doing anyway, even if it wasn't a priority.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, like sending the letter to businesses-
Yes, yes.
About the plastic bag bans.
And Mary's going to, and Mary's already on that, so.
Yeah, I mean, it'll be done anyway, right?
Yeah. Some of them are low-hanging fruit, others, not so much.
So explain the Create Personal Action Form, DAF, and Certified Payroll.
In my town administrator report tonight, I actually have-
Well, if you'd like to wait, it's up to you.
So the Personnel Action Form is a way to get any kind of employment actions, hires, step increase, promotions, terminations, any kind of personnel actions, activity, through the proper channels and approved and in an employee's personnel file. Right now, I just finished last week, how many, I did a number of memos trying to memorialize personnel changes for this fiscal year. Having a Personnel Action Form, if it's happening outside of the annual process, would allow information to get to the accountant, the treasurer collector, me, the employee's personnel file, Personnel Committee, and the board. We'd be able to run all these actions by all of these bodies and officials for approval, and then finally make those changes based on those approvals, rather than having a process that might or might not hit all of those approving authorities. The auditor is very big on, the independent auditor is always very big on procedures and the basis for making any changes. This Personnel Action Form would actually serve as the basis for making any of these changes, and it's a piece of paper that can be produced when requested. So that was kind of, that's definitely been my priority since before I did all the memos last week, and I know Personnel Committee has seen it. You have it in your packet tonight with the Town Administrator Report, because I wanted to show it to you for, for your review. But I think it's really important. In addition to that, I don't want to go on too long, but in addition to the Personnel Action Form, which would take care of employee actions throughout the course of the year outside the fiscal year cycle, we're also looking at doing a Certified Payroll spreadsheet that would memorialize all the, the pay rate changes and memorialize the hours for every single employee at the start of a fiscal year. So we'd have everything in writing memorialized at the start of the fiscal year, and through the Personnel Action Form, all changes that happened during the course of the year. So I hope I've made that understandable.
Okay. It's one of those things that was on our to-do list but never got done, correct?
Yeah.
All right.
We're testing it out right now. We're doing, we're running a few drafts to see how they're, how they're working.
Motion to approve Margaret's priority list.
Do you, I mean, I'll second it, but I still have a couple of questions.
Yep.
I'll second it. I was wondering about the building use, the space storage, is that on here in any way?
Space needs, is space needs on here? And if it's not, I have no concerns with adding it whatsoever, because that's something that comes up regularly.
Yes.
The topic that comes up.
Whether it be buildings outside, within the town, I mean, it was all-encompassing. Or space within this building.
Okay.
Or, you know, any other building.
Okay.
Yep.
And storage.
Okay.
That was the only other thing I thought might be missing.
All right.
So the only other question I had, Margaret, I mean, obviously-
This is, yeah, this is six months, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Only six months.
Right.
Well, you know, you did-
She started today, not last month.
You did have a week where it was kind of light, so, you know, just saying this makes up for it. So obviously is-
Did I?
No. No. So obviously, as these things are accomplished, will new ones come up from the five pages? Or is that going to be that we take a look at it?
If she finishes a Merle, she gets to stop working for extra time, right?
Yeah.
Of course they won't.
You know, honestly, I think that's exactly how it would happen. I really do. And there are going to be things that come up that we don't even-
That are just going to pop up.
That are going to pop up.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Along with all of these, yeah. Every day.
You have a master list of your own, don't you?
Assign other work to June as needed.
Whatever, huh?
Whatever.
Okay, I'm good.
Yeah, that three-page listing is, is still there, and, and certainly things could, could move up.
And you may, you may find that some of those become hot items just because this is just a-
Exactly.
Not a guideline, not a rule.
Well, this was the result of-
Multiple.
Part of your contract, too.
That's right. Yes, that's right. The six-month meeting on goals and objectives.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. So I seconded the motion. Are we ready for a vote?
Gotcha.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Very good.
And please, Margaret, let us know how we can help. I mean, I, I only speak for me, but I don't want you to feel that everything's just dumped on you because you're our new town administrator. It's like, Margaret's here, Margaret's here, Margaret's here.
I don't feel dumped on. This is a great team, and I appreciate that. I'm going to be asking the board to review and approve a lot of policies and procedures. It's going to be constant. So we're going to be coming forth with that, and your review of those and adoption of those is going to be really important. And that's just, I'm, I'm sure there'll be more. I'm sure there'll be more that I'll ask.
Yeah, same here.
Thank you.
All right. Organizational chart.
Yep. The only changes that were requested were the addition of the Inspector Land Use Clerk for the Building Inspector's Department. I've added that. And the Fire Chief reversed a couple of, or, yeah, reversed a couple of positions, I think, in the, from the last one. You do have a color, do you have color copies? Oh, excellent, okay. Yeah, so the ones highlighted in yellow were the changes. I think it was Mary noted tonight, the Public Safety Admin Assistant is still under Police Chief, and I'm sure we can find a way to connect Fire Chief, Police Chief, and Public Safety Administrative Assistant somewhere in the middle.
Well, you just took my question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's it.
There you go.
You've already answered the question then, because I thought she reported to both.
She does. She supports both. So I'm thinking of actually moving Police over next to Fire, and then we can connect the Fire Chief, Police Chief, and the Admin Assistant.
Connected dots, huh? The only other question I did have is, have you gotten, well, were you going to seek any feedback from different departments, or?
I did. I actually distributed this at our Department Heads Meeting and asked for feedback.
Okay.
The two that I had primary concerns, well, there were, there were three, those that have, you know, kind of a larger command structure, I was, I wanted to make sure that I checked in with those departments. So I got the feedback from Fire Chief. I spoke with the Highway Superintendent. He said, we decided to leave all of the positions that currently appear on the Class and Comp Plan, but he did say that currently, the operating positions in his department, even though the others exist, are Highway Superintendent, the Foreman Position, the Heavy Equipment Operator Driver Laborer Mechanic Class B, basically the everything position, the Seasonal Temporary Laborers, and the Custodian. Those are the positions that exist now, but the others do exist on paper, so we decided just to leave those.
Okay.
Police, I got no, I got no recommended changes from him and nothing from anyone else.
Okay. Are you looking for an approval tonight?
Yes, please.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We'll make that one change, and we'll be able to post it.
And the Communications Protocol.
The only request that I had, again, I brought this to the Department Heads Meeting and distributed it, and everyone had a chance to look at it. The only request I, I received was from, from the inspector asking to be put in with the Emergency Communications Protocol, because if there's a fire or something of that nature and they have to get into a building, they're going to need to hear right away.
You mean the Building Commissioner?
Building Commissioner.
Yes, okay.
So I've added Building Commissioner to that top part. Still, all those positions routinely communicate through me, but in emergencies, that may, that may differ.
Okay. Do you, do I hear a motion to approve?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Now, you realize, Margaret, at our next coffee talk, we're just going to change it to chat with Margaret, you know, as you get up and like present all the changes that you're doing.
The board has some, you-
No, no, no.
You tell me what you need to do. You need me to do.
The, let's see, Code of Ethics, Code of Conduct and Ethics for Boards, Committees, and Commissions.
The only change to this is the Acknowledgement of Receipt that's been added to as the last page. Everything else is the same as the board saw it at your last meeting.
So everybody, when they come on, will sign this?
Would be sign Acknowledgement of Receipt.
Okay. And they'll do that through Eloise, or how is that going to, how is that going to happen?
I think that we, I think that we would want to do that along with the other sign-offs, not necessarily conflict of interest, but we have the, what do we have, the IT, the Acceptable Use Policy, the Sexual Harassment Policy, so they'd be part of the HR paperwork.
For Boards and Committees?
Oh, gosh, that's right. These are appointed.
This is why I'm asking you, because if Eloise has to do this, you need to get her in the loop.
Yep, I'm going to need to bring Eloise in the loop. I can certainly-
Put it with the appointment letter. It could go with the apartment.
It could go with the appointment letter, but yeah, we do need someone to file them with. So I'll talk with Eloise. If she feels that it's not appropriate, then I could take, you know, we could take that on, Mary.
I just, you need to have a-
Yeah, that's good.
You need to have a process.
Thank you.
I was thinking employees.
So we can still approve it, you just need to-
Okay.
Yep. Trying to look over.
We could note who to file it with at the bottom of this form.
Okay.
And not to play naysayer or Debbie Downer, and I wouldn't assume that any, we'd have any issues, but if you're finding someone, and you, collective you, you us, were finding someone that is violating specific codes, the process would be?
The process would be that I would, I would take it upon myself to have a conversation and remind the, an individual or an entire body, public body, of the Code of Conduct and Ethics.
Okay.
Should that be something that's in here, or?
Yeah, 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 we could do that.
Well, and, I mean-
Is that something that you're going to add to the personnel guidelines?
Except Boards and Committees aren't-
This is Boards and Committees, so I think, I, what we-
That doesn't apply.
3A, direct all problems or conflicts which cannot be solved and pose to the attention of the town administrator.
But we could do it vice versa, Town Administrator.
I believe you also have the ability that if somebody does cross a serious line, you can remove them based on the special act.
The board, the, not a Board and Committee member, the board could actually not reappoint or take other actions.
Right.
If the board is the appointing authority in this case, you, you-
Right.
Do we need to put that in there?
I think it's already-
Or do you think it-
Already part of it.
Is that the, is that the negative side of the whole thing? You know what I'm saying?
I think there have been, I mean, I think the, the problem here is there have been issues, and we don't have a set procedure as to what to do when there are issues. Because this is, I mean, there, there have been problems, and there has to be a way, if there is a problem, to progressively-
Resolve it, yeah.
And remove if necessary.
It could be a separate policy, too.
Yeah, it doesn't-
It could be, but we, but I-
I mean, you need this, but maybe the next step, or the, we also need to have a clear, if you are violating this policy, these are the steps and this is what happens.
So are you thinking like corporate world, Lisa? You know, like you get a, you get a verbal, you know, no, 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 and then you get a written, and then you get a written, and then you get a boot.
And there are some things, though, that, especially on a volunteer committee, there are some lines that if you cross them, then you should probably be done.
Correct.
And there are things that have happened where folks should probably have been done. And I just, I'm not sure how to-
Well-
And maybe that's the discussion that you have is, you know, maybe it's time for your resignation. Maybe that's, that's part of what you do is having that discussion.
Yeah.
But I just want to make sure that we don't continue in the way that we have where bad, 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 and nothing happens to fix the, the problem.
I think it's actually, and I hadn't thought of this ahead of time, I'm glad the discussion is happening now, but I don't think it's a bad thing to actually reference action the board may be able, you know, may lawfully be able to take in the event there are, there are violations of the code. So, I mean, even noting it broadly in the code and then developing a policy to go with it to make sure that we outline all the steps the board has the ability to take under the law, that I think is worth noting in the code.
Well, maybe check with other towns and see, is that what they do? Do they have a separate policy? Do they have it included, or?
Or maybe if you, maybe if you have the intermediary, maybe it's not as big of a thing as it's been here, but it's been a thing here.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And it needs to be-
Well, maybe it's because we haven't had this, too.
Well, that's what I'm saying. You haven't had this, you haven't had a town administrator who can, can address, everything would have had to been done in the board, which you don't want to do, even if a volunteer is violated, you don't want to haul them in front of a camera in front of the board.
Oh, God, no.
You just don't. It's-
Would you like to, would you like me to come back with a proposal to add under Item 4, Prohibited Conduct, just add one last little section that gives the board the authority to take action in the event of violations, or the appointing authority or something?
Well, my concern is that when you say take action, you can drive a truck through take action.
You can, you can.
You know, I like Roger, so I'm going to look the other way. I don't, you know, like-
In accordance with established policies and procedures.
Stop waving.
Take action in accordance with established policies and procedures or something to the effect.
And then we're going to have to come up with those.
Okay. Would you like to hold on this then until September 3rd, until we have that wording?
I would.
Okay.
I just had a couple of tweaks.
Okay.
Number one, under Responsibility to Municipal Administration.
Mm-hmm.
I think it should benefit all, all, looking at all people in the community. Just, that would be my preference, rather than the people. I would just say all. You have to look at it as whole.
Where are you looking? I'm sorry.
That's number one already, Chris.
Community responsibility?
Responsibility to Admins-
No, I'm looking under the Responsibility to Municipal Administration, which is number two, but I'm looking under number one of number two.
Okay. All right, so how would you like to change that?
Somehow, it's all encompassing. It's all people in the community.
Oh.
The last part of the sentence. That's all.
How about for the benefit of the community or for benefit of all people?
Yeah, all. That's what I put.
Okay.
All. And then I think on that section, it would be 3C, direct all questions or concerns to the town administrator. Letters may also be addressed to the Board of Selectmen. However, an initial letter to the town administrator will expedite required action, so on and so forth. Could, I'm just asking whether, I don't even know if anything has to be included, but could questions and concerns be brought to the selectmen's attention, should it just go to the town administrator? You know, it's kind of nice for us to...
Yeah.
Know what is a concern of people.
Yeah.
If we don't know, you know, it's harder to serve the people that have voted.
Yeah. Let's see. Direct questions or concerns to the administrator. That's under responsibility of municipal administration. Instead of letters may also be addressed to the Board of Selectmen, you could say letters may...
Or...
I do think that Margaret is the first line, though. She is the first line, and she keeps us informed. That's part of her job is to keep us informed.
Yes. Exactly. I'm just reinforcing that. That's all.
Letters may also, however, an initial letter...
Like I said, I don't know that it needs to be changed.
Okay.
I'm just saying that the questions or concerns should be brought to our attention. That's it.
Well, but Margaret will. I mean, that's going to be, either it's going to be part of her, as she was getting to, I think it was Lisa who mentioned it earlier, you don't really want to say, oh, I got an email about Tommy, and isn't he horrendous type of thing? I mean, so we'll need some, and I hope there isn't anybody named Tommy. Oh, Mr. Bradley. Sorry.
All right. That was the only things that I had on there.
Because, I mean, with that, you have to have a sense of trust, you know, that it's going to go to Margaret, and she's going to do whatever she needs to do.
She's got her hands full, though.
That's, I suppose that's the one thing I'd be concerned with is just the volume and so where it goes. But...
Exactly. It doesn't have to be in this. I'm just saying. You could say an initial letter to the town administrator with a copy to the board. You could do anything the board...
Leave it like this, if there's a problem?
We'll change it.
Change it.
Okay.
None of this is, you know, we're not doing stone tablets. It's a word edit and a vote.
Okay. So, we're holding on that?
Okay.
Am I correct?
Just for the, yeah.
Yes.
The little piece.
All right. Revisions to the ADA grievance procedure?
So, yes, the ADA grievance procedure that currently exists was adopted in 1996. So, I have...
Also, no, nothing's changed since then.
I have received a standard template for grievance procedures, and I am proposing that the board adopt the grievance procedure based on the new format. This would also incorporate any legal updates to the Act and other procedural things that the Act would address. And the reason I'm asking, one of the reasons I'm asking the board to adopt this new, this new format and new grievance procedure is because we are going to be looking for an ADA self-assessment grant. We don't have one of those in Berlin, and that would allow us to avail ourselves of some grant funding that we can't at the moment. It would also allow us to really get a good sense of what facilities are accessible, what facilities, what town facilities need additional work to be ADA compliant, et cetera. And another, an ancillary thing to that is the fact that we are a housing choice community. Our designation expires in 2020, and in order to avail ourselves of housing choice grant funds, we would also need an ADA self-assessment. So, we're really looking to try to get this ADA self-assessment done.
Margaret, the only question that I had, first page, last paragraph, under note, if you prefer to use an alternate format such as Braille?
Yeah. And we don't have the accommodation for that at the moment. So, we would need to, yeah, we would need to tell them that we'd need to find another way to accommodate that request at the moment.
Okay. Yeah, because it's kind of vague to accommodate the format of your choice.
Mm-hmm.
It's a little wide open. But again, you don't want to make it so narrow it's constrictive, but at the same time, too, you don't want it so wide open where you're buying a Braille machine, or this machine, or that machine, or that machine.
So, we could say accommodate the required format instead of the format of your choice?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you have it?
No.
Here.
I don't think so. I don't think that one's, what is this?
That's just the clip from the...
I just didn't know.
The OSRP. It's got the, it's got the current grievance procedure in it.
Okay. Wait a minute here. Where's this? Oh, you brought this one from home, didn't you?
I did.
All right. Nope.
Can just use this one. Do we need to vote on it?
I don't remember looking at this. I don't remember seeing it in the email.
No, there's been a bunch of emails that's been coming through last week and this week, so I've just been like printing and sticking it in my backpack.
I mean, that's what I did too.
This one's in the agenda pack, was in the agenda pocket that she sent, the email.
Okay.
Oh, the current and proposed, yeah.
All right.
And it's been really nice tonight, I have to tell you, having, I haven't had all of them, but most of, having most of the things in the one email so that I can just go to that email and pull them up.
I tried to bundle on Friday.
Yeah.
I was bundling. I was bundling lots of things.
Because normally I'm scrambling to try to figure out which email it was in.
All right.
So, do we have to vote?
Do you want to vote this evening?
Yeah. If the board's ready.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We'll make that one change and get it posted.
And then this one.
Got those both of them, I thought.
The ADA notice of...
Those are rights. Well, there are two separate items on the agenda.
Yeah.
Revisions to the grievance and then ADA notice of rights.
Yeah, that must be posted. So, that's something that, again, has been updated, I'm sure, from prior 1990s versions.
Right.
And this must be posted.
Okay. Do you want to vote for this one too? I thought we were doing them together, but maybe not.
And you're making changes to this? Because it has updated 96 and also has Tommy Andrews, the ADA coordinator.
So, we changed...
And I don't know what that phone number is.
Yeah, we changed, the current one, the new one, the proposed one, we changed the way the contact information showed. So, it's now listed differently in the procedure.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
All right. Well, Lisa just made the motion to approve the ADA notice of rights.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We'll get that posted.
All right. We've got the Chapter 61B, request for Tom to waive right of first refusal for the two-plus acres on 167 West Street.
Okay. This is for the solar project. This is the Ayers property. This was forwarded to legal counsel quite a while ago, and also to, notices were given to the local boards and committees and the state forester according to the statute. We have heard back from Concom, but not planning and assessors, but they've been notified a few times on this particular, on this particular item. Concom does not have any issues, and in other words, they don't want to maintain the property under town control or seek to acquire the property. We, again, we've heard nothing from assessors or from the planning board in the several weeks that it's been out there. So, because there is no policy requiring that the comments be submitted and consistent with the Flynn property that came before the board a few weeks ago, I would recommend that the board exercise its waiver, not exercise, but waive its right of first refusal.
Okay. Questions, comments?
No.
Your motion?
Motion to waive first right of refusal.
Seconded.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I know we have, and here's the stuff. Sign?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, we're gonna come brief. I should keep that.
June was going to be looked to. Am I melting here from the, it's my bedtime?
Okay. Stay in here. Okay.
I had a feeling almost now.
You're melting?
Yeah, I could like fall asleep on the table, yes.
I could too. New puppy gets up really early.
Would you like, would you like to skip the TA report and we can just post it online? Or how would you like to handle that?
Is there anything on there that you feel we need to...
You did not send, did you send this to us?
Yes.
Okay.
I did.
All right, then I've already read it.
You're probably aware of most of these things, but there is nothing, here is nothing incredibly urgent. There's a lot going on in all the different areas, but CPA is a big one. The administrative finance team is meeting tomorrow morning. We're talking about the administrative aspects of CPA implementation again. And just a note for the public that CPA exemption applications are available through the assessor's webpage. We'll try to find a way to pull those out. People can click on forms and then look under exemption forms, and that's where the CPA exemption application lives at the moment.
Can we make hard copies of those? Because what if people don't have access to the interweb?
Yes, we can.
Maybe post them here or drop them off at 19...
Cut it.
For the general store.
My guess is if you, if you don't have the web, you're going to go to the assessor's office.
And pick it up?
She can...
They'll probably have them outside the door like they do the other forms and everything.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah. So, that's the biggie. Everything else, we'll just post this online and everybody can see the updates.
Just a question on the heating oil. Has this building ever looked at alternate heat? Because doesn't the school have, what, pellets or something in the giant container?
It just, like, this is like the first year, I think, that they've...
The hopper?
First to second.
Yeah. So, is there anything that we can look at to maybe reduce the cost of oil here at the buildings?
Yeah.
I mean, I know that's long-term. That's not like, hey, Margaret, six months.
I think solar is already something that's being talked about, but it's...
A while old.
It takes time.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, we need to look at that. We also need to look at the condition of the equipment.
Need to fix the roof. Yeah, there's a lot of things that need to happen.
Okay.
Yeah. That's all going to be, hopefully, that's all going to become part of the capital plan when we start identifying everything, so.
Okay. Other new business, old business, whatever those are. Executive session. Do we do have a quick one?
Just need to wait for a minute, right?
She is ignoring me.
And it's approval. Yeah. What is pickleball?
Pickleball is huge. It's in all our surrounding towns. I reached out to the woman who runs it. There's a grant. I've talked to the rec committee. I've talked to Holly because it's geared towards seniors. You can do it outside, you can do it inside. It's kind of like a combination badminton tennis. Have you seen it? The nets are only like this high?
Oh, yes.
It's kind of like four-square.
I've seen national championships.
Yes. It's huge. Pickleball is huge. So, this, again, is something that I think that we should try to do for the, well, no, to try and bring back community involvement, to try and do something. So...
Can you do it down at the south corner?
Yes, they even said that they would come and they would line the tennis courts to see if it's something that we could do. And they play it over at the gym in St. John's in Clinton. So, there's a grant.
Clinton.
Clinton. So, I'm talking to rec committee. They're meeting tonight. Talking to Holly.
There's a grant?
Pickleball. Maybe coming to a town near you.
That has spread like wildfire, the whole pickleball thing. It really has.
It is. Pickleball is, it's like cornhole. All right, I'm done.
So, there was a document distribution policy. It's not the one I was asking about.
That was the agenda policy.
Yes.
Yes, we could work on that.
And the document, are you planning to bring that to us at some point?
Yes.
All right.
Yes, and just others, preview disposition of surplus equipment.
Procedures.
Use of town council, others, I think procurement policies, lots of them.
All right. Then we just have a need for a quick executive session, Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A7, to review approval, executive session, meeting minutes, July 9th and August 5th.
My talk, you have...
Kefi.
Stone eye.
You're not coming back?
And we're not coming back.
Not to adjourn.
Except to adjourn.